7.4, consideration of increase in county match amount for area agency on aging due to population change and recommendation by governing board to increase staffing. And this is from Social Services. I'm guessing we have Director Markatan?
Yes, she is on our panel. And she's coming--
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Hello.
And I believe we have the--
Lisa Faraco is also on.
Yeah, Lisa Faraco and Deana Eddings Green are also. And Lisa and Deana will be presenting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can I share? Do I have the ability to share my screen for the presentation? I think that I do. Please let me know if you can see the presentation.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Lisa Faraco. I'm Program Manager over the Area Agency on Aging at the Lake County Department of Social Services. I'm joined by Crystal Markatan, our Director, Deana Eddings Green, our Program Coordinator for the Area Agency on Aging, and Nicole Streif, our Area Agency on Aging accountant. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the program and then get into the funding that we're asking for. I provided a really detailed report with this agenda item. I'm not going to hit every single item in the report, but I'll do an overview and we can always circle back. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Okay, so the Area Agency on Aging of Lake and Mendocino Counties operates under the direction of the Lake County Department of Social Services and the Area Agency on Aging, which I'm going to call AAA moving forward just for--to save myself here. AAA oversees our long-term care ombudsman program. So what is a long-term care ombudsman? A long-term care ombudsman is a specially trained advocate who resolves complaints on behalf of people who reside in long-term care facilities like nursing homes and assisted living residences. They investigate complaints. They have a very regular presence in these facilities. They assure that the interests of residents are represented to policymakers and governmental agencies. They provide educational programs to community and conduct in-service training to staff. And they witness advanced healthcare directives and certain property transfers for residents. So the work they do, and this is just a tiny overview of the work they do--
You're chasing--
--is really important.
Oh. Nothing, I was just gonna have you tell Dad. Oh, sorry.
Director Markatan, if you can please mute your microphone.
So we'll get into facility metrics a little bit. The ombudsman program coordinator has oversight responsibility for 20 Mendocino County facilities and seven Lake County facilities. I don't need to go into the breakdown, you can see it here in the picture, but it's a combined count of 541 long-term care beds. So there's one ombudsman and one volunteer to cover the 20 facilities in Mendocino. And the AAA coordinator serves as the ombudsman program coordinator and oversees the seven Lake County facilities as an ombudsman. So now we talk about the staff hours associated with the facilities. As you can see, these are our numbers for 2022. The numbers from Mendocino County are quite a bit higher than Lake County. And it's important to note that Mendocino County does have more facilities than Lake County does, but this also includes the time that our staff spends driving to these Mendocino County facilities. And one of them is Fort Bragg. You know, there are--it's a lot of drive time associated with driving from Lake County. Another important thing to note is that complaints only become a documented complaint if they cannot be resolved through information and assistance. So that's a big part of what our ombudsmen do, is they investigate complaints, they speak with the residents, they try to resolve these before they would become a documented complaint. So funding, how do we fund this program? Funding for the AAA of Lake and Mendocino Counties comes from the California Department of Aging, the counties of Lake and Mendocino through a joint powers agreement, a specified match, and the Lake County Department of Social Services. This is what the JPA states for the match. Each county's financial match percentage shall be based on the number of seniors in each respective county. This calculation shall be established utilizing the most recent state census data available. So how do we determine what the match amounts are? We look at our population counts. And these are the counts of people in each county that are age 60-plus. And you can see, we have a very high percentage of people in our counties, both counties, that is age 60-plus. So the county match amounts were last updated in fiscal year 1314. They are currently set at $94,655. Lake pays 45%, and Mendocino pays 56%, and that's based on the percentage of seniors. The Lake County portion is $41,962. The Mendocino County portion is $52,693. So historically, this match amount has been used to offset the cost of salaries and benefits for staff. For fiscal year 1314, salaries and benefits totaled $253,000, pardon me, and $608. And for fiscal year 2223, salaries and benefits totaled $348,862. There has not been an increase to the match since that was determined in 1314. So why are we asking for funding for a new position? The long-term care ombudsman program regularly undergoes program monitoring by the state long-term care ombudsman. The report that we received at the end of 2022 had findings requiring corrective action. The action recommended by the state long-term care ombudsman and approved by our AAA governing board includes employment of a full-time long-term care ombudsman coordinator. So how do we get there? We have to increase our staffing. So the total cost for the AAA to add the ombudsman coordinator position is $169,244. This includes a portion of our AAA coordinators, A, that will need to come from the AAA budget instead of the ombudsman budget, because the AAA coordinator will no longer be doing double duty, filling both of those positions. So this is an increase of the match amount, $74,589, that we're asking the counties to cover in addition to their current match amounts.
I have a question before you move on.
Sure.
If I may. Where does the current match, let's just pay attention to Lake right now, the $41,962, that comes from the sources of funds that we receive to run the AAA program?
Nicole, can you answer this one for us? Where does that match come from?
The $41,962 comes from general fund. It comes from Budget 5168.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. So in order to increase the staffing, we have to increase the funding so that we can afford that extra staff member. So we--the governing board of the Area Agency on Aging recommended that we take this item to our Board of Supervisors to get the approved funding. Mendocino County has already approved the funding. So what we're looking for to move forward with this position is the funding from Lake County. If this is approved, then Social Services can move forward with adding this position to the 2324 budget. It's important to keep in mind that according to CEA, the population of seniors in Lake County is expected to grow 20% between 2010 and 2060. And Mendocino County is expected to see a 44% increase in that population. As this population grows, we will have more people needing the services that we provide. And that's something to keep in mind when we're looking at funding these programs. The Area Agency on Aging governing board has agreed to address the match amounts more frequently. Deana, you'll have to remind me what they decided. I think it was every two years?
It's going to be every four years in line with the area plan update that happens.
Thank you, every four years with the area plan update to make sure that our county match amounts correspond to the current population counts and that they're sufficient to support and sustain these programs that are so desperately needed by the people in our communities. So now, this is where we get to questions. I'm sure there are questions. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. Feel free.
Okay, before we get to questions, Supervisor Crandall is the Chair of AAA, and I'm just wondering if you want to add something?
No, yes, we've been looking at this for, I want to say, past four or five meetings, right? Maybe even more, yeah.
It's been six months, I think, since the state ombudsman came.
Right, and so we've just been basically trying to iron through it, push through it, figure out what equitable or what the amount would be for the match when it came to Mendocino and Lake. And so I know that the staff has worked really hard to get us the numbers that were most recent in regards to the population of the seniors, because I think they were using another one, I think from 20-something, 16 or 15. And so thankful that the staff found that to ensure that our seniors were represented accordingly. So in our AAA meeting, we voted to basically implement this change as well. And so basically, we just need--of course Mendocino had already conducted their vote, and now it's just us. So that's all I have on that.
Yeah, he's referring to an incorrect report where we actually were going to have more seniors, and that got straightened out, thankfully. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. And to the item itself, it makes perfect sense, but one of the slides raised a question for me about equity. So according to the terms of the JPA, this share is all population-based, but I was stricken by the amount of staff hours Mendocino has versus ours. So the bang for the buck question comes up to me, equity comes up to me, especially now that I see Mendocino's population is going to 44% increase versus 20% for us. So I just--I don't even know how to wrap my head around the question, but I think you know where I'm headed. We can do a simple share based on census data or population data, but the actual program itself, the deliverables vary quite a bit in Mendocino County versus Lake County. So at some point, the equity question comes up. You know, is population the appropriate metric to do that share of cost? Is it locked in by state law that the JPA has to use that metric, or am I just barking at the moon now? And I'll shut up and listen to the answer.
It's a fair question, and I might not have the best answer. This might need to go to Crystal. But part of the reason why our Lake County facilities don't have as high of hours is, of course, the travel time. If we're able to fill this position, we may be able to have an employee that's located in Lake and an employee that's located in Mendocino, which would cut down on travel time. Also, our ombudsman that services our Lake County facilities is our AAA coordinator. So she's split, and she doesn't have the full capacity to be just an ombudsman in our county. Part of the ombudsman coordinator position duties is to create and maintain and grow a volunteer network. Our volunteer network was decimated and is gone, basically gone after COVID. So we need somebody who can really spend the time to grow our volunteer network, because they can do a lot of this work that allows us to serve both counties more equitably. The JPA, I don't know that that can be revisited without making some big changes to the Area Agency on Aging as a whole. That's a question for probably the governing board. And I don't know if Crystal has anything she wants to add in there.
No, you're doing a great job, Lisa. You know, I would just say that traditionally, the AAA is underfunded. They have mandates that are not funded, and the long-term care ombudsman is one of those. I mean, it is funded, but not adequately. And so after the review that we had, we were strongly encouraged, and strongly encouraged, to create more capacity in that area. And in fact, there was a point when we thought we would be on a corrective action for that, but they realized it was not actually able to apply corrective action to us. But, you know, we do see this problem in real time in that Deana Eddings Green is doing currently double duty, and her time is really spread thin in those areas. And so I think it would be advantageous overall to get this done. But again, the Area Agency on Aging is not funded to pay for the mandates that they have. So that is why we are here before the board. And it is not also, I'm sure you're all aware, a DSS program.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So a couple of questions, and thank you for Ms. Faraco's time yesterday in speaking with me on this. I'll start with the easier question. As far as, obviously, if we're using 40-something thousand from general fund here, we're asking for another 30-something thousand dollars in order to meet the matching needs of 23--and 2223. We know where that money's coming from. It's just something we have to adjust for in the budget. Just kind of curious if there's a good response to that.
I don't have one. Crystal, did your staff speak to Stephen before he left on vacation?
I do not know the answer to that. Lisa, did you have a conversation with Stephen?
So this, when we submitted this item originally, the admin office asked for a detailed budget to show where the budget was going, what we were asking for, our staffing, all of that information. That was submitted to Stephen Carter and--
Lisa.
I don't--yes, Aisha. So they looked over our numbers and made sure that we were, I guess, good. The budget is not really my deal, thankfully. But we did get the admin-- this did go through admin before it came to your board.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where it's going to come from. I wasn't part of that discussion, but I can bring that back to the board. It wouldn't have gotten this far if it had not been reviewed by Stephen Carter.
Okay. And then we're looking at 2223. Are we preparing--
This is 2324. I'm sorry, fiscal year 2324 is when this would come into effect.
Okay, so we are looking at the fact that in our MOU with our unions, that there's another 2% increase coming on as of, I'm guessing, July 1st?
So when we created this match amount, we put the ombudsman position in at step five so that we wouldn't get somebody in that we couldn't afford to pay. Nicole, did you include the cost of the increases from the union?
Yeah, I used year three for the MOU.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to ask that, since that wasn't on the detailed stuff, or at least I would have--I missed it if that was. And then my last question is one that I left Ms. Faraco with, and that's budget-wise, and I think this requires a much deeper conversation, but I just want to share my concern. Budget-wise, we're looking at for 2324, 1.9 million with approximately 500 and, I'm going to say 50,000, something like that, for administrative purposes. That is close to 25%, and I feel that's top-heavy. And I recognize the need for staffing to ensure that the programs are running smoothly or being reviewed, and that everything is being made available to our seniors here, both in Mendo and Lake. And so what I'm hopeful is, I mean, I'm looking at our Vision 2028, and item number 10 is to invest in Lake County's richest resource, our people. And at the bottom of that third bullet point, it says, "Recognize the wisdom and experience of senior citizens and serve them well." And I feel that as a board, we deal with fires when it comes to our seniors, where like, our senior center's saying, "We're running out of money, can you help us? We have a pandemic, can you help us?" And I'm not seeing a continuous, and as you stated, it's very underfunded, your AAA, for the needs of the area. And I'd like to have a deeper conversation of how do we try to invest in some of this? And maybe it's an incremental investment to get to where we need to get, where we are investing in our richest resource, our people, which includes our seniors, where it's not an emergency situation that they come and request to see if we have funds available, that it's something that we can actually fulfill their needs without having to come to us in such urgent needs as they usually do. I don't believe that I've gone a year, both as a council member and now as a Board of Supervisor, where our senior centers were not struggling to keep doing all the work that is requested of them. And so I don't have an answer, but I'm hopeful that in the future, I'm not part of the AAA, and I appreciate the board members that are, but I'd like to get some better understanding and maybe a deeper presentation of AAA at the Board of Supervisors, because I'd love to see what we can do. And obviously, we'd have to ask Mendo to do the same thing.
Let's keep it on this item, though, because this is just for this request that--
And the reason I'm asking that is because it is absolutely top-heavy--
Yeah.
--by 25%, and that concerns me. I would rather talk about providing more services than adding more to the administrative part. So it's very related to that, that I can't keep supporting the way that this is built, because it feels very off in comparison--
If I may--
--for our seniors.
Supervisor--
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but our, we're counting under administrative, the cost of salaries and benefits for staff that are working in the ombudsman program. Typically, this salary for the ombudsman program coordinator, the ombudsman would be under program, but because it's run through the Department of Social Services, our staff are using those funds to run the program. If we--Nicole can speak more in depth to the budget and the percentages that are in use, but if it was run as an outside program, we would be far, far leaner in administration if our staff wasn't having to run the program.
And so I'll just add that we were visited by the state ombudsman, I think it was October? Was it October? Do you guys remember? I think, yeah, October. And basically told, "We have to do this. We don't really have a choice." So we just, we spent the last six months trying to figure it out. And looking at the, looking at the match amount every so year, every few years so that we can stay within the correct correlations between our two counties is important, but essentially, we're not giving a choice on this. It wasn't exactly mandated, but they did say they would be following up with the requirement, and we would be out of compliance.
If I may make a comment to that?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to say we shouldn't move forward with today. I think that having the CDA provide that report to us and moving forward is fine. Just requesting sometime in the future, it's up to the AAA board and staff, but sometime in the future to have that deeper conversation.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board, then I will look for public comment. Have anybody in the Zoom room?
There is--
Crystal had her hand up.
Oh, Crystal?
Yes, hi, thank you. Crystal Markatan, Director of Social Services, Executive Director of AAA. So, you know, we do have some administrative expenses, but for the most part, Deana's position, when she was, has been doing this, has been literally going to, throughout Lake County, to resolve long-term care ombudsman complaints. And this takes her away from the administrative duties of running the AAA, which was the problem that was, you know, was expressed to us by the state when they came in to do a review. You know, all in, in total, I think we have three people working for the AAA between two counties, and it is a huge geographic area to cover. And it's a complex set of small programs that are slightly different in each of the two counties, but it's amazing to me, the work that is being done in this program area by so few people. And as it was pointed out earlier, our senior population is growing, it's not shrinking. And so we can expect, you know, a more intensive use of the services over the coming years. And so I would like the board to support this. It sounds like that may be the direction you're going, in that we, I think we need to have AAA in this county moving forward, and we need to not, we need to be able to provide the services somewhat with fidelity with the state's plan. And we clearly are not hitting all the marks there, and most of that is due to understaffing. And again, just a complex geographic area that we're covering. And I just can't say, I have to say thank you to the staff that work in the AAA, because it is, it's a huge task.
Thank you, Crystal. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to echo Supervisor Sabatier's comments. I'm going to be in support of this, but I think there are some big picture things AAA probably needs to come back and look at, if only for the board's education. And, you know, I would like a little clarity where we're getting this general fund match, if only because as we're coming up to budget, I can think of at least one agency, one department I know that desperately needs some general fund support. There's probably more. And going back to the equity thing, so I don't want to reinvent the AAA wheel. You've said staffing is an issue, so if there's a skew in service delivery, and, you know, we're kind of stuck in population-based percentages versus needs-based, maybe we can work through that as we get a better idea of how to properly fund this. But I hear what you're saying, chronically underfunded, state mandate, got to do it anyway, corrective action if we don't. But here, we're putting a Band-Aid on it with general fund money. I can think again of multiple departments that probably need some additional love. And so I wish I understood this better. So I'm going to support it without having a full understanding of how it applies to AAA here, and how similar concerns raised about other departments that are going to have funding shortfalls for their unfunded state mandates, how and when they can come back to the well and ask for some general fund support. So confusing, excited to move this forward, but also not excited.
May I have one final comment?
Sure.
So just to clarify, the Area Agency on Aging is not a Department of Social Services program, so we are not funded for it. It comes with its own funding. And typically, in other counties, it is run outside of Health and Human Services. And in this case, I'm guessing some years back, there was no other place to put it, and so it ended up at Social Services without funding, or, you know, the minimal amount of funding that it came with between the, the funding from both counties. So we, at Social Services, cover all of the overhead, which includes the building space, the cars, you know, all of the, all of what it takes to actually operate. All we're really asking from the board is help with this funding for staff.
Okay. No one in Zoom?
There is another hand in Zoom, phone 6205.
Okay.
Thank you, this is Bart Levinson. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about one of your projections about the growth from 2010 to 2060. If I saw the slide correctly, you said Mendocino was projected to be a growth of 44%, but Lake County only a growth of 20%. And I wonder if you could speak to that. And then I also want to make a statement that it needs to be, for this fire-prone county, a long-term goal. And I appreciate Supervisor Sabatier's comments very, very much, that we make sure that the senior centers are outfitted and prepared as disaster-ready.
But this item, Bart, is about the ombudsman increase. So that's what we're speaking about today. So can you keep your comments to that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, we're talking about the general fund, and that's what I'm speaking to.
No, we're talking about increasing the amount by $32,000 to pay for this position for the ombudsman. So that's what this item is about. Are you still there?
Oh, I'm just listening to what you said.
Yes, okay, so that's what we're speaking about. So if you can keep your comments within that, within these parameters, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
So my question about the percentages, uh, is not relevant to the discussion at this time?
Yes, we'll get, we'll ask Crystal, but if, do you have anything else to add? Okay, if there's nothing more, then, um, Crystal, can you speak, or Lisa, on how those projections came out?
I think Lisa would be best to handle that one.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I could speak to that. So that, um, that data came from CDA directly, which is California Department of Aging. It's available on their website. You go to Data and Reports, and then Facts About California's Elderly. It, um, gives a breakdown of the anticipated, um, increase in elderly population for persons age 60 and older, um, across that year range, and it breaks down by county. And that is available on the CDA website.
Great, thank you.
We have another hand from Paul Branson.
Okay. Paul, if you'd like to unmute and give your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Paul Branson, I'm the President of the Advisory Council on Aging for Lake and Mendocino County, and I'm a Lake County resident, and I'm speaking in favor of this, of this item. Um, you know, the big picture here is we have one position now that is managing two major programs, and if we get, if we can, uh, if you can approve this funding, then it should have a major impact on both the ombudsman program, which needs better oversight of our, our long-term care residents, and hopefully, uh, it will, it definitely will add more capacity to the AAA and those, um, seniors who are not in long-term care residents, but who need additional services. And, and we just finished our area plan update, we've got, you know, uh, uh, pretty, uh, strong goals in terms of improving housing, improving healthcare, mental health, transportation, resolving isolation. And, you know, we just need more capacity in our staff to help, uh, find the resources to do that and to coordinate with other organizations. So, um, I'm, I'm in support, and I believe the rest of our advisory council members are in support of this as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
That's it.
Okay, if that's it, then I'll bring it back to the board for action. Oh, CAO Parker?
Yes. Um, I don't see that there is, uh, the action is to recommend that this be considered during the budget process, there is no...
Oh, okay, right.
Is it call session?
No.
You can come in.
Okay.
That we bring this back through the budget process.
Okay, right. So there is no action required, okay.
Are you sure?
There's nothing, it says, um, we normally don't author, do this type of, of funding outside of the budget process, so the recommendation from the board is to bring this back before the board for consideration for funding.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need a consensus?
I think, we have consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation today.